Was there?
Where were you at?
Mike just, he just got back.
Oh, they brought, they had the open ranges.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He just got back yesterday or today, so he went last week.
I've been in wilderness areas and had cattle grazing in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I found out how could they do that? They said because they got grandfather rights because they had grazing rights before it became. Yeah, they were standing for the wilderness. It's like nothing like sneaking through a wilderness and all of a sudden.
What kinds of fun this thing?
I ran into him up on.
Lots of things.
Yep. You betcha. Okay. Counselor Linder, I haven't heard. Is Counselor Linder on Zoom? Okay, okay. Yeah, no problem. Good evening. Okay, alright.
Did you have success?
Oh, I wasn't here last year.
Sorry, I should have waited. But did you have fun?
Sure.
Oh, it's beautiful, so. You said it was a lot, there was a lot more water.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Everybody turn your microphones on. Let's go ahead and get started. Alright. Okay, let's go ahead and bring our city council meeting to order for the September 22nd, 2025. Uh, let's go ahead and while we don't have the pledge on here, shall we do the pledge and then we'll do the roll call after that.
We are already in the script. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do roll call. We know Counselor Linder is not going to be here tonight. Okay, so Counselor Ray.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Here.
Counselor Myers.
Here.
And Counselor Evans.
Here.
Great, thank you. Um, public comment. Do we have anybody would like to provide a public comment during three minutes of fame? Going once. Going twice. Okay, I guess we have no public comment. Do we have anybody online just to make sure?
I will double check.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It does not appear that anybody would like to offer public comment. I don't see anything.
Okay, alright, very good. We'll go ahead and carry on then. Next up, we have staff reports and updates. We've got the city administrator staff report on the agenda first.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you very much, City Council. So I am now currently just past sixty days with the city of Monroe. It feels like a lot more. This is a good thing. It's a positive review. Um, I wanted to provide some feedback and some of the things we've been doing over this last month. Uh, so first off, the Civic Plus website transition continues. Um, we did send out a survey to council and commission. Thank you to everybody who provided feedback. Uh, we did give those comments to Civic Plus. They are in the process of completing our website and my understanding is that we will have it in hand at least a week or two before their October 22nd launch date that they had originally quoted. I am pushing them to get that as fast as they possibly can. Um, I attended, as you all know, I attended the Oregon Infrastructure Summit in Seaside. I joined our last work session from the hotel room directly after that day's session. I do have a lot of great materials to share with you and discuss with you at our next council work session. Suffice to say that there was a lot of stuff that came out of that conference. It's gonna be really beneficial for the city. First off, there's new funding tools available. There's new legislation that the city may be very interested in learning more about and either supporting or not supporting. And more importantly, there's going to be some technical assistance that I've been able to connect with some folks, both in the private sector and the public sector, who are eager to support us in our own infrastructure upgrades. We also have continued with preparing planning commission applications. Uh, I wanted to let you know that we will be submitting the public notice uh, for the phase two of the PNDI project. That application was deemed complete and they will go before the planning commission on November 3rd. Uh, and then we also, also, I have also completed the steps for paid leave Oregon. That is both for um Chuck as well as for Shannon. And I'll just stay because I think unfortunately I, I have to, I have a broken tooth and I'm speaking kind of funny tonight, so that might be the reason I trip over some of my words here or there. Um, again, just going into a little bit more detail, I did work with Civic Plus and as I said, they'll be ahead of their launch deadline by a couple of weeks. The finance and budget, we have been working, myself and Don have been working to identify some of the issues that we've had in the past and to come to council with ways to rectify the issues with regard uh to our local government investment pool, fund transfers. Suffice to say is there is one LGIP account. We're allowed to have many and we really should have many. And the way that our interest is being distributed across the funds that we currently have when we earn interest on those monies isn't quite dialed in the way that we would want it to. I'll be bringing to council some resolutions for that, but we've been internally addressing that issue. Also, I've had the opportunity to meet with many of my counterparts around the county, including the county administrator, um, folks from the council of governments. We have some things in our packet this evening to discuss as well as several city managers and administrators from the area. I continue to work with the regional solutions team that includes from DEQ, Business Oregon and DLCD primarily. Others are involved, including transportation. Um, I'm working with the county building official to make sure that we have our process in place so that when somebody comes to us for a land use application, we get them out the door and in good hands when they make their way to Benton County. I understand there's been a lot of challenges there in the past, so we are fixing that. I've also been attending the monthly networking events for city managers and administrators throughout the county. Those are hosted by the COG. I found the COG to be an excellent partner in bringing us together and helping us put our heads together to figure out what everybody is doing to address a lot of the same issues that are coming to us faster and faster each year. And also, as I mentioned earlier and I highlighted here, there was the, the Seaside Infrastructure Summit. Um, I have continued to coordinate with branch engineering. The mayor and I have a meeting coming up, I believe, tomorrow with branch engineering to discuss the projects that are underway. And we will be working on the corrective program we've discussed with regard to the moratorium that was before you just recently. The PNDI comment is also on here. I kind of jumped ahead of myself a little bit earlier on that. Um, we are continuing with the Envision Monroe process. And so at our next work session, we'll talk a little bit more about how council would like to see that process move forward, what direction you would like to give to planning commission, and we'll have a little bit more robust discussion about our timeline so we can firm up those dates. Uh, and I am continuing to work with the Long Tom Watershed Council. I've had a lot of great work over the last several weeks with them. We now have weekly standing meetings where we're discussing the 1135 bridge removal project. This includes monthly or bi-monthly meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers. I'm making sure that everybody is speaking the same language. We understand that we are the ones that have to submit the RFPs. The money is coming directly from Long Tom. We're just dialing in a lot of the steps that hadn't been dialed in previously, but need to be at this point if we're going to be going into construction potentially in the next year or two. We're not there yet, so please know that you'll have some work session meetings and council meetings to be briefed and have decisions on what the next steps are going to be. Um, there are a number of grants that I'll be bringing forward at our work session, city, city council meetings in the near future, um, including a correct congressionally directed spending request. This would be through the US government, um, of course, through uh representatives, Representative Bonamichi. Excuse me, Representative Coil. I'm still in Tillamook in my brain. Uh, and also with our state representatives. And then finally, um, we are developing, our staff is developing a number of standard operating procedures. I briefed you all on some of this previously. The most recent one being credit card expenditures and the form that goes with that. There are many more policies that we're developing right now and that will be coming before you in the near future. Those are my primary updates. Uh, I'll go ahead and leave the rest of this in your packet for you to review. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. You said it's, did you say these sent out surveys to us?
Yes, that's correct.
And where, how'd you send them?
I sent those out via email. It's possible, this was before I had all of your council emails set up. It's possible that some folks didn't receive those. That was about a month ago.
Okay, yeah, I didn't. And I also still have not received my password for my email.
It's the, you received the email that I sent to you setting it up, is that correct? On your, on your personal?
Nope. No recall seeing it. Nope. I've gotten like the packet stuff and things like that and I went back and thought I might have missed it, but I didn't.
Okay.
Recall seeing it.
Thank you.
And I didn't get the survey either.
Yeah.
I went back and looked through, so.
It's quite likely, there's a lot of folks who probably, there are several folks who probably didn't have that because there are a lot of email challenges. Everybody should have their email nailed down now. Are there any other counselors that don't have their email nailed down? I've met with most of the planning commissioners as well. My apologies, Counselor Ray, we'll get that figured out.
Uh, Counselor Linder would be another one to double check with because she has had email issues forever.
Yeah. My understanding is she's good, but I will double check with her.
Okay, and Counselor Evans, or is yours all good to go now?
We did that together in the office the other day.
Oh, excellent. Very good. Perfect.
Alright. We can do that together. Eric, hand it back over to you.
Okay, uh, looks like next on the agenda, we have a finance staff report. Uh, it's on page seven of our packet.
Yes, I will go ahead and just give the brief update.
Okay, great.
For Dawn, who's not available to join us tonight.
Okay.
Um, she just did just have a really quick one page in here. One of the things that she's flagged for me and that we're working on internally is several, several revenue line items um, that didn't have income as of that, as of yet of this year. We haven't had any money come into those lines. She's questioning that. And so we're actually looking at a lot of our line items right now. There's somewhere there's money not going out. There's somewhere there's money not coming in. What was the intent of those? This really comes back down to how I have directed um, Dawn to identify through a single or two sentences, every single fund that's in the budget. She and I are going to discuss this a little bit more and come back to you. She wanted to make sure you were aware that that was going on. There's also some coding issues that kind of flows into the same um category of problems. Uh, and as, as far as coding changes, so some things like facility fees and summer consumption, this gets a little bit into the weeds and the daily process that Dawn is dealing with and that I'm dealing with. My goal at our next meeting, at our work session, is to bring this up to the fifty thousand foot view. We're talking the same language. Allow you to understand it from that perspective and provide us some direction. Um, there, there's a lot in here that I think unless, unless you were like in Spring Brook, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to you. Spring Brook's our, our tool. But just things aren't being applied properly. And the good news is that Dawn is catching those things. And I am guiding her on what to do there. There's a lot of things that we haven't done in the past. You'll see some of that tonight when we talk a little bit about um budget. Uh, the, the, the big thing to share with you uh is that we're questioning what the steps look like for our bi-annual budget and anything that needs to happen. Typically, things need to happen quarterly. I'll share again, I have a slide deck specifically for that and we can dive into those details. Starting next month, you will see more um detailed reports from both our finance as well as public works departments. Anything else with finance?
Yeah. Okay.
We have a financial report to share with you in a little bit.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay, uh, we'll move on to public works. Mark, what do you got for us?
Um, so um, between the twentieth and the twenty-fifth of last month, Chuck and I got out there um and got the wastewater outfall cleaned out. We got photographs, we got the geographical location, everything all submitted to Chuck and the report has been submitted to DEQ um, as well as the sludge survey of the ponds that happened on the twenty-eighth. Um, and that has also been submitted to Chuck and to DEQ. So that brings us up to date with all of our uh annual reports that we needed to submit for the wastewater side. Um, I know we ended up needing to get an extension. We met the extension deadline, so we should be good to go on all that for the year.
EQ's happy?
Happier.
Happier.
Okay.
Um, so uh, in that timeframe between, we, we ended up getting a water leak out at the uh, the wastewater plant, the water main line coming into the plant. Uh, something happened, busted a, a forty-five degree elbow. It was a pain to get put back together. Um, and the first time we did it, it didn't wanna, it didn't like the configuration we went with, so I ended up having to redo it. So we're back up on board with water out there. Uh, with that, we um, we had to replace the um, the pressure tank for the well over at the park that we primarily used for irrigation. It was just waterlogged. Um, and we use that to irrigate the park and the baseball field. Um, so it was middle, well, towards the end of the ball season, so they needed water for the field. So we got that pressure tank repaired, but in, while it was failed slash failing, the pump was continuously cycling, caused a lot of water hammer, so broke some pipes again. I'm just waiting on a couple of small parts to get that put back together. And then hopefully, this will be the last time for a while and the irrigation should be good. On the twenty-ninth, um, we were fortunate enough to have another blockage in the um park restroom pump. That's twice in about a month and a half and it's flushable wipe. So we are taking steps to try and make sure people are not taking outside products in there and flushing them. Um, it's good to go right now. Um, we've kind of talked a little bit discussing options on what we should do, whether we should kind of just let it play and let that pump run, or if we should look at increasing, but I've talked into the plumbers and the specialists. No matter what you do, a flushable wipe is a flushable wipe and it's gonna cause problems. So.
Okay.
Looking at options. Uh, we got signage up now and we are, Dawn and Shannon ordered some trash cans with lids that close, so people feel a little more comfortable disposing of their intimate products. Last week, I met with a gentleman named William from a company called Security Monster. The mayor brought to our attention a grant through our insurance for upgrading our surveillance equipment in some of our locations throughout the city. So I met with him. He's building us um uh, a walkthrough on what they can provide and what they think is going to be the best and capturing all of our locations uh the best and cheapest way possible. And I'm gonna.
Did you do, did you go around and get um estimates?
I'll take that, Mark. So yes, we are starting with Security Monster, but we will have a minimum of three estimates before we move forward. Um, that's as an internal policy. I've made that a requirement for all purchases and I suspect that is city councils preference as well.
That was gonna be my very next. Security Monster will be like the start of our spec, basically.
That is correct.
Yeah.
We are, it's not a four gun confusion that we're just going to work with them and they're aware of that.
Um, so yeah. Last Friday was a fun one. Um, fairly mid-morning, uh, Shannon received a phone call in City Hall alerting us that there was a sewage leak, uh, leaking manhole um, over off Depot Street. Uh, there's a line that runs through the ditch there back up to Seventh, between Seventh and Dollar General. Uh, I went out there and sure enough, the manhole was overflowing and it was filling up the ditch. We got drain raiders out of Eugene out here. They sent a high-pressure uh sprayer in there, cleared the clog pretty quick, uh, which was nice, but there was a lot of water backed up. Uh, went to looking and all the sewage from the northwest side of town, all of Ash Street, North Tenth, all that stuff comes and meets at that pipe, so.
Comes down the alleyway, doesn't it? Or does it come down the alleyway or down the, which one was it?
Which, so it'd be running east to west. And it's right behind um the Derris Place.
Okay.
Is the manhole.
Cause there's a manhole right out from Enreaky. That's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, so it, it comes down and intersects these manholes right in, in that ditch back there.
Okay, you're talking about the ditch right at the property line, right?
Across from you, correct. Yep. Um, so we got that uh blockage cleared. We sent a camera in and we did find some root intrusion in there. Between myself and the plumbers, we kind of suspected that the root ball was bigger than what it looked like on the camera because we sent that high-power pressure up there and kind of cleared it out a little bit. So something we're gonna have to keep an eye on. After that, well, when I was first made aware of that, this is where I was going with that DEQ statement earlier, um, I did have to call and make a report of a spill. So, do you hear, DEQ was aware?
Okay.
Um, we finished up the work. We got it um sanitized with uh some lime and then called it a day. And then this morning, we got together with Chuck and got all the information that was needed to get the actual paperwork submitted to DEQ.
Okay.
And that is now done as well.
Okay, great.
Uh, as most of you are aware, we were able to get any play chips installed out here. Um, and it seems to be a big hit. We received a new set of bleachers finally for the park after that ice storm. Was it two years ago?
I think so.
So funding and everything finally went through. We got the bleachers. They just need to be installed. So we had a meeting with Miranda last week and uh we've been talking a lot about volunteers and they do a lot of volunteer work and help us at the field. So we asked if they had some folks that might be interested in helping us install those bleachers, especially right now with Chuck being down and just myself here.
Right.
Um, she said that uh she thinks that they'd be more than willing to help. So.
That's great.
Just have not heard back from her yet. Another one we're on, there's a dead tree right at the, right up here on the walking path, right, right next to the grade school. Uh, it's been brought to our attention a couple of times. I have a quote that was approved for getting that removed. And then last but not least, we've been talking a lot about finishing up my certifications. Now that things are getting a little bit easier, uh, we're gonna be working on getting a calendar put together. We just ordered some, some books for the water side and I'm hoping to try and be certified in water uh by the end of March.
Nice.
Yes. Any questions?
Thank you. I guess I do have one question on those, uh, the systems that were were, um, we have the reports on the systems that we did. What, what were the findings? Was there anything major on those?
No, so.
So it's just normal, normal and DEQ is gonna be satisfied?
So um, I haven't really gotten the actual extensive report from OAW yet for the sludge testing. It was just a initial findings report.
Okay.
To, to satisfy DEQ. So the actual report is still coming from them, but they got Chuck what he needed to be able to actually submit the report.
Okay, and Chuck was, was good because they will, they'll, they'll tell you.
Yep, Chuck didn't mention anything that was concerning um the outfall inspection. Besides all of the shrubbery and trees that had overgrown it, it was in fairly good shape.
Okay. Did you have one other question? I noticed there's extensive like trimming going on at the park, especially where um the river is. It's like wiped, wiped out.
Over, right, right by the dam?
Yeah.
That's what we cleared.
That is, that's.
That's where our outfall is.
Is it really?
Chuck and I took all of that out in order to get to a, about a six-inch pipe.
Hey, you guys have been busy.
Pictures, I can show you pictures.
No, I mean, you, I've been like, okay, something, something's going on here. I just wasn't sure where the location was, but like, yeah, no, okay.
Yep, yeah, so it comes straight, there's that alleyway right there with the boulders. Our discharge pipe comes straight down that alleyway and dumps right into the river right there.
Okay, good to know. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, a couple of things to note on that and also for the council's benefit is that there is a calendar that we're putting in place. Mark is spearheading that process. The calendar includes the things that need to happen on a weekly, monthly, semi-annual and annual basis. One of those things that has a reoccurring uh event and reminders attached to it is to clean out that outfall. DEQ will be very happy about that.
Yeah.
I also want to mention that I am very, I'm aware at this point that there have been a number of regulatory correspondences that did not make their way to all council members or even any council members in many situations. Please know that every regulatory correspondence that comes to the city will be presented to you in either a work session or a council meeting.
Thank you.
And I'll be sure to provide some additional staff contacts so that you can ask questions and be well informed about what it is they are talking about. We actually received one today that will be in front of you at our next work session.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say I'm a hundred percent supporting you in getting your certification.
Yes, yes.
So whatever you need, man.
That's a big step.
It is. It'll be great. Only question I had is on um the sewer line that had the blockage. What is that made of? Is it concrete? Is it reinforced? Is it plastic?
It is. I think back in somewhere between seventeen and nineteen, there was a section of that pipe that was replaced with newer uh ABS thirty thirty.
Okay.
The green stuff.
Yep.
For the most part, it's all concrete.
Okay.
So the majority of that line is.
I think going all the way down the alley to that pipe is all concrete too.
That's the case with most communities around us. A lot of other communities are dealing with this right now. They use concrete for many, many years. One thing to note is that even though we got it cleared, it still has a big hole in it.
Yep.
Right from the root. And so when we start talking about intrusion and inflow infiltration and inflow, the I and I, you guys are gonna hear a lot about that. As we start going down the road of figuring out what our capacity is, that's going to have a negative impact on capacity because we'll be taking water in through our wastewater system that typically didn't come from anywhere but in the ground.
Is there any way to sleeve that one at all?
Yeah.
I mean, that is really for an expert to come in and say, here's what.
We've had contractors come in.
Yeah, like here's what we know, right? But I think what we need to do is we need to open up the entire system and.
True, yeah.
And figure out just really everything, what the condition is.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I was thinking about that same line that goes down and feeds where feeds, comes down the alleyway. I think two blocks north of me, it broke about ten years ago and I was just spraying out.
It's highly likely that we have clay in the ground.
Right.
Guaranteed.
We're like ninety-nine percent. One of the things they were saying is the engineer came on board, he goes, if they still exist, they probably crumbled into pieces at this point in time. So there's, there's a lot of issues that we're just gonna have to accept them as reality as they come at us, but we don't have anything yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Concrete, clay, good times.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, anything else for Mark?
Thank you, Mark.
Uh, next thing we have on the agenda is uh water and wastewater infrastructure updates. Chuck's not here, so shall we just skip over it since he's not here? Or do we have an update?
Um, the, the core update is that I'm working with our regulatory agencies and will be pulling the trigger on getting an assessment on those infrastructure systems here very, very soon. Chuck is a big part of that conversation.
Okay, that's very good. Okay. Alright, well, I know the sheriff is chomping at the bit to give us an update. I know he's online waiting for it. Sheriff, we're ready for it.
Can you hear me okay?
Well, I have the sheriff here. I've also got. Okay.
Can you hear me alright? Oh, here we go again.
So I reviewed the previous one's report. Um, not too much in regards to things to note. A bit more, um, simple thing which happened right now is uh taking it back and straight. School resource deputy for, for students here in the.
Okay.
Off here, so playing catch-up, but I've already checked in with the administrators over at the head school and went on tomorrow morning, first thing, going over and talking with the grade school. I, and I've already met many of them on calls and at football games and stuff like that. So obviously it's a big priority, but uh my background experience, I have a little bit more training when it comes to school safety and those types of things and responses to juvenile issues than kind of the average street stuff. So it's a big priority of mine. I'm not always going to be the one on duty um able to respond to a call, but at the very least, if it's something that is gonna require some follow-up or needs to be checked in on, that's absolutely something I'm gonna do. If we got a football game going on down the road, there uh, yeah, so just seeing lots of things out about and I'll just continue to press upon people in my squad and around the office that now that school's back, we could really use the uh traffic. Just have a presence out here on the fifth. And then lastly, um, I don't know the best way to do it, but if there's an opportunity, um, maybe tomorrow after I meet the grade school and if I get the chat, maybe, whatever. Um, I wanted to just check in and see, not necessarily from the pulpit here, but have a conversation about how the like code enforcement um conversations are going. Then obviously with where that's at, I can pass that on to the sheriff and see what we can do to help support you guys and your citizens and implement whatever you want to do with that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alright. I know the sheriff was on. I didn't know if he wanted to add anything to the conversation or not.
Can you hear me? Can, can you hear me okay? I can't hear me.
I do see the sheriff on there and I see it looks like his microphone is working. Let me just be sure that our volume is on properly. Hold on sheriff, let me ask you to go ahead and please repeat anything that you had just said.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, yes.
We can.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted, I just wanted to, I appreciate Brig being there and I appreciate Brig being down there. Uh, for you guys as, as a, as a resource and an asset, I do appreciate it. Mark, congratulations. I'm excited for you to get your certificates as well.
Thank you.
Um, I just, I, I will remind everybody, uh, we were in the process of, and I don't know where it is now. But uh we would certainly like to get the, the um codes that are, if we can get them codified. So I can get them up here and get them entered into some stuff so that we can start uh taking some enforcement actions down there. And running more stuff through your municipal court, through your justice court. Um, I did see where I think it was um. Perhaps uh Deputy, Deputy Ressler, one of, one of the two, uh, somebody down there issued some citations. It was Gavatowski. He ran some sites through municipal, your justice court. And so that's good, but I, I'd certainly like to be able to be more involved in some of the stuff down there. As you can see on the report, uh, we've been trying to deal with some parking issues on Eight Street. And so that's uh, that's just something worth noting as well.
Okay, very good.
I thought we already had our codification.
Well, I, that was, that's a great question. I thought our codes were codified, but.
Yeah, codes are not well codified. I, I echo the sheriff that there is much work to be done.
Okay.
Um, and as I've already shared a little bit so far with Council Williams, Linder and Mayor Sheets. In our thirty sixty ninety day updates, there's just a lot of stuff that I'll be bringing to you for revisions following the ninety days. And my overall report of all the things that I found in those first ninety.
Perfect.
I don't wanna shoot from the hip and start fixing things right away. I want a comprehensive list of stuff that you understand.
Right.
Shoot from the hip, man.
We don't do that.
I, I just wanna, I just wanted to throw it out there as a reminder. We're still waiting on those. And so there's no urgency. It's a, that whatever it's gonna work for you guys, I just wanna make sure you know that, that uh we are still waiting for that because my, my folks are chomping at the bit to go to work for you.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Do we wanna bring up the conversation that the three of us had, me, myself and the sheriff? Regarding security, do we wanna bring that up now or later?
I leave that entirely to your discretion, Mr. Shears. My opinion, my opinion is that um. If you touch on it lightly, it may have a benefit.
Okay. You're already. I know.
So it was, was it Thursday when Sheriff came down and he met with myself and TJ? And we talked about a variety of things. My, my main thing was security, especially after recent events. I'm concerned about security, especially at a council meeting or a committee meeting and folks um coming into the building. With uh being armed or having concealed weapons or whatever the case may be. Um, and I know, I don't, I think Councilor Linder is at least one of our counselors that is concerned about that. I am concerned about to a degree as well. And I just, I wanted to make sure that, well, if we need to have a conversation about it, we can. Um, if we don't wanna have a conversation about it right now, that's okay too. I just, I think our security, it's important that we feel safer. So um, I know a sheriff is a hundred percent supports us on whatever, you know. And I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Sheriff.
Well, I will point out that I do have Deputy Savage there in the room.
Yes.
And then if he can't make it, he'll certainly let me know and then we, I can come down and we can, we can, we'll have somebody in the room all, at every meeting.
Right, understood. Yes, and thank you Deputy for being here. Appreciate it. So I didn't know if anybody wanted to have that conversation.
Well, I, we've had issues with that before.
Yes.
And we've had problems with that before. I'm just gonna leave it at that, but it has been improving since then as far as I can see, so.
I will tell you, I can recall a meeting in the distant past that I was out with another deputy and we counted numerous concealed weapons on people in the room.
Oh, yeah.
And, 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 and we don't necessarily see that anymore and then they're not violating any laws if they have the proper permits and uh.
Right.
But I also have to take into consideration your personal safety and uh that, that's, that's. You know, take a priority for me and for this office. So just, just as you, so you know that, so.
So, and I, and I, I'm gonna bring up, this is a, I had a conversation with my son. And we talked about recent events and I won't go into the details. I think we all know what it's about. But we talked about concerns about what if something was to happen. Um, we have people that come here and we've had disagreements with them. And my son's concern as well as mine was, well, what if they disagree and they think they, they need to do something about that? So that, that was the only reason why I brought it up is there was a personal element for me, but I think I'm not the only one that feels that.
No, you're not. No, and, and like I said, we've had that, we faced that already and, and been in the room with um that situation.
Personally had a threat right in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But I also saw the council president, not this one. She was concealed carrying.
Yeah.
Yeah, which.
A couple of things to note, this is low hanging fruit. Policies for entering city buildings. So no concealed weapons, no weapons of any kind posted on the doors, simple policies that are encoded and codified in our own policies and procedures. That's first. They have signage on the doors that make sure that the culture is communicating, we're communicating our culture to the public.
Right.
And I think that the discussion about whether we should have some kind of security when entering this building and or other buildings, that includes city hall. Um, people who are disgruntled can come to us in any venue at any time. I might recommend that we have a council discussion during the work sessions so that we can lift this up. And at least have the discussion and see if it's something that we'd like to carry forward. I'm happy to put that on the next agenda if that's something the council would like to do.
I think that's a good idea.
And I would, I would certainly like to be involved in that as well.
Absolutely, and, and Sheriff, um, and I appreciate, I'm sorry, Deputy Savage. I appreciate the uh conversation to get us started off on the code enforcement stuff. But Sheriff, that's another one that we'll wanna sit down with you about. Make sure we pick your brain and that we're doing things at the local level, especially if we deputize somebody from the city uh to be a code enforcement officer, that we get in front of you and have that discussion first. So we wanna walk uh arm in arm with you in anything that we're doing and appreciate your guidance.
All right. Okay, that was it. I do have a license.
I do too.
Yeah.
I do as well.
I would hope so.
Having my identical twin brother is a crushing officer, I had.
So I opened up that can of worms. We'll talk about it in the next work session, so.
He's retired now, but he was a captain of the.
Listening, I appreciate it. Uh, all right, any other comments, questions for Deputy Savage or the sheriff? Okay, thank you both for being here. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Enjoy this great weather.
Yes, you do the same. Thank you, sir. All right, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda has a summary of our August minutes and that was with uh.
I do have a question on that.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
It looks good on the dates for everything going through here until you get to a couple of pages where it says as of eleven fourteen twenty twenty five. Not sure how we can do this.
Yeah, no, clearly not. Um, so I wanted to be clear what, what we are doing moving forward and, and we'll go ahead and make a correction on that. So what we're doing is we're summarizing minutes now rather than producing a full transcript. You can now see those videos on our YouTube page. We've had one for quite some time. We've only had one video up there of Mark showing us how to get into the MCC. Um, but now we have many other videos which.
I remember making the video. I didn't know it went anywhere.
Oh, yeah, it made it up there. So we now have official council minutes available for the public to watch. Um, our minutes will be in summary format so that we don't have twenty, thirty pages of minutes to put into the back.
Okay, but this as of, I presume it's as of nine fourteen.
Yeah, my, my apologies for that. I will check to make sure that gets fixed.
Because I remember somebody, I think we talked about having up to date stuff as most current in this packet. Instead of always a month behind type of thing.
As regarding, with regard to what?
These bills and stuff.
Oh, you're talking about the bills?
Yeah.
I see. I thought you were talking about the minutes.
No, no, no.
You got it. So can you, can you revisit your question now that I understand?
Oh, um, there's a transaction journals and eight oh one to eight thirty one. And then it goes to accounts payable paid eight twenty five to eleven fourteen. And I'm presuming that is a typo meaning.
Oh, yes, I think what happened, so it does only capture until the day that it was pulled. But you don't know what day that is because I think the data dump put in was just some future date to make sure all that's in there.
Okay.
Yeah, so is, it'll only give you to a current date. Good catch on that, so.
So, yeah, I mean.
Thought we fixed that. Which page are you seeing that on? Cause I've never seen.
Page uh one, two. Yeah, one, two and three, starting with the accounts payable paid. Oh, it's, it's even on, there's two pages to, what the heck? Two pages to. There's accounts payable. Accounts payable eight twenty five to eleven fourteen, page one, and there's page two. And then it starts over and it says accounts payable paid as of eleven fourteen.
Is that, so I see treasure support. Oh, you're looking at the APs.
So, yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha. You're on the APs.
Yeah.
Thirty-five, thirty.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was looking at the page up here. Okay, thirty-two and thirty-three and then uh, I do know it's, it's capturing up, I think I saw. It's capturing core up to nine twenty-two.
Yep, and so that was pulled on nine twenty-two. You're just gonna get a snapshot up to the date of when this is.
Okay, so the as of is not really.
Correct.
I mean, that's the.
Yeah, I see that right here. We'll make sure. That's just a, we'll call that a scrivener's error from the software system. We really should have put in a better date on that.
Well, I can understand why you did it, but yeah.
Yeah.
It was just a little confusing.
You can see the date on the top right corner is nine twelve. We just didn't capture the right two and from.
Yeah. I'm just asking you a question in case Augur sees it.
Thank you, sir. I thought you were telling me we had the minute summary wrong. Like, oh, no, not my first one.
No, no. No, it's the bills.
Not quite viral yet though, by the way.
Are you, and we haven't had a bunch of clicks yet?
I found in only thirty-five years.
So, so we'll take the video of you doing the.
Throw it on there?
We'll see if we get that one.
It's on TikTok?
What?
Oh, the video?
No, I said I'd throw it on TikTok for him. I don't TikTok.
I don't TikTok either.
Okay, so.
We've got minutes, we've got financials, alright.
On pages, but I haven't seen anything yet that really stands out other than those date things.
Well, soon we'll need a motion here at some point.
I have a quick question on the nutrient egg solutions. The dust control says two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two gallons. Was that um like lignin or you know what it was? Street?
Yeah, I can't remember what it's called. It's all natural, like tree sap mixture type stuff that they.
Lignin out of the pulp mill, yeah. Council Ray and I both know where, but that's.
We, we burn ours. It smells like barbecue sauce.
Little black liquor burner, yeah.
Green, black, white.
Green, black and white.
I do wanna note that you'll see on page thirty-six a, a number of charges for audit services. Um, there, that, that is a double edged sword, right? We spent a lot of money for audit services, but the wonderful thing is that we will be fully up to date on all of our audits within the next week or two.
Which is awesome. At long last.
At long last.
That's nice.
We did three years of audits in three months.
Dawn felt like she was in perpetual audits.
Phone with the auditor regularly, a couple of times a week, a meeting once a week. Usually, I mean, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
I'll have soon. Let me know when we've got a motion.
I'll make a motion that we prove the minutes as written unless somebody has an objection somewhere.
Comments, questions?
There's a lot in it today.
Yes, there is.
I just have one quick question. On the audit services, are those gonna continue to be annual from here on out?
They will be annual every year. You didn't see them last year because we skipped a couple of years.
So are, are we gonna have them all at the same time or are we able to spread them out?
Um, you'll have, the, the audit services are going to come out once a year in the same chunk of time.
Okay.
And so it's always going to be around, no, it's, it's typically gonna be like. May that you'll see that stuff happening. The last one might come in at the end of May.
Okay.
By June, there's no more of those because we're, we're approving the budget by that point.
Okay, but the audits aren't happening at the same time every year, right? We can plan those and schedule those out.
Right, yes, exactly right.
Thank you.
Um, they, they give us a timeframe, but it does happen in the same period of time, just so I'm clear. You, when they look at, when they finish the budget, they'll go into the prior year's audit.
Uh huh.
And that'll be a couple of weeks. You can separate that from when we do budget work. Typically, they don't have a lot of input on the budget side.
Okay.
They might guide us on a couple of things, but typically it's all audit work. It's all within the same couple of week period of time. We don't have a lot of discretion on when that is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, okay. We ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Ray, yes.
Counselor William.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbert.
Yes.
Counselor Meyer.
Yes.
And Counselor Evans.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Let's move on. So we have a proclamation. It's on page thirty-eight. So we're doing a proclamation honoring our first responders. We're doing it for the entire month of October.
I literally have a dry socket, so I think we'll say.
I'll do it, I'll do it for you, Dan.
Honoring First Responders Proclamation. Whereas first responders, including career and volunteer, serve and ensure public safety and render aid to those in need. And whereas law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, search and rescue teams, rescue pilots and divers. Emergency, emergency management professionals, nine-one-one dispatchers and members of other organizations in the public safety sector come together to protect the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas first responders must be ready at a moment's notice to provide life-saving services to residents of our community. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week throughout the year. And whereas in carrying out their duties, first responders frequently are called upon to put their own lives in jeopardy as they respond to dangerous and devastating incidents and disasters. And tragically, some have paid the ultimate price carrying out their devotion to service of others. And whereas these burdens are not, are carried not only by first responders, but also by their families and loved ones. Who make great personal sacrifices in order for the first responders to unstantingly serve our community. And whereas the deep commitment exhibited by first responders to our community is worth, worthy of sincere admirate. Excuse me, admiration and the residents of Monroe and South Benton community owe a debt of gratitude to the first responders who ensure we are safe and secure. And whereas it is fitting and proper that the city of Monroe organ, uh, recognize October twenty twenty-five as the First Responders Appreciation Month to salute the contributions of law enforcement, firefighters and emergency services personnel to the security and well-being of this community. Now, therefore, the mayor and Monroe City Council do hereby proclaim the entire month, October twenty twenty-five, including National First Responders Day on Tuesday, October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. As First Responders Appreciating, Appreciation Month in the city of Monroe. And urge all community men and packs, community members to express their personal gratitude to those who serve us also selflessly.
Thank you, sir.
Dry now.
We need water.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would have deliberately done that.
Alright.
Direct to vote on it?
That is entirely your decision. I mean, if you wanted to make it official from the mayor and city, you say. That is entirely your decision. I mean, if you wanted to make it official from the mayor and city, you say from the mayor and city council, if you want to do, you could. Otherwise, it sounds like this is a pretty easy one.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we vote on this proclamation. Whatever.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. And then Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor William.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
And Counselor Evans. Thank you. Official, and thank you all, all first responders. We got standing committee assignments. I thought I was gonna be able to work on it.
No worries. What I thought we would do, so we need to firm up and make clear what our committee assignments are. The goal is to have all of these listed on our website. And the term limits will be shown there at the same time. That is both to communicate to the public who's on what committee and for how long, as well as communicate to you. And a staff when we need to start having discussions about renewing those commitments or finding replacement roles. So what I wanted to do today was begin with a discussion. If you know you're on a committee, I would love to hear about that. When you think you were placed on that committee, if you know for a fact, that's great. If you don't, well, what we're gonna be doing over this next month, including at the work session, is taking some time to figure out what that should be. When your actual term date started, we're gonna fix that and say when your term date ends, that's going to be fixed as well. And we'll be able to move forward with very clear, concrete criteria about who's on what committee and when the terms end. So I don't know if you wanna kick it off beginning with a specific committee. I don't know if you just wanna begin with counselors and. Which committees you think you are on? What is your, what is your thought?
I will go ahead and I'll start with myself.
Okay.
And I'll include Budget Committee in this list here, which includes Economic Development, Finance and Personnel, Parks and Facilities, and Public Works. And then Budget, of course. I'm on all of them, and I have been since twenty twenty-one.
Okay. We have a discussion about Budget Committee. In fact, this is probably a really good time to bring that up. I wanna just bring to your attention some concerns that we'll need to address. If I could, I'm gonna stop sharing this for a moment so I can see the tabs at the top there. So. The Budget Committee in the way that it's formed is prescribed by law. O R S two-nine-four-point-four-one-four-point-two. Dates, and I'll read this verbatim. The Budget Committee shall consist of the members of the governing body. And a number equal to the members of the governing body. Of electors of the municipal corporation appointed by the governing body. What that means is that you must have an equal number of citizens. You have.
Yes.
Counselors. My understanding is up to date. We've had typically one or two members and they don't have clear term limits. They have, their their term limits are prescribed. Um, by statute as well. I only gave you the one O R S that exists. But what we will need to do is have an equal number. So you need seven, six to seven committee members to sit on the Budget Committee. Um, and that is again, that's a, that's a legal requirement. We don't have a choice in that matter. And those, that's one of the things that we're gonna need to adjust coming into the next budget cycle. You have to put out an application process. People have to apply. They have to know when the application closes. They have to be interviewed and we have to determine which people are going to be selected and that has to be done through a council action before the committee is formed. And so, given the fact that we'll be forming that committee in March, which is only six short months away. We'll wanna start getting, moving on that process in the near future. But the wonderful thing is that one of the things we're trying to do right now is increase our committee membership from community members. You want community members on your committees. This is your on-ramp, fulfilling those vacancies in key places such as city council. What you don't want is fresh faces who have never been involved in anything before coming on city council. I'm sure many of you know what that feels like, right? And if there is an on-ramp, we're more likely to be able to pull people in, get them invested because they're already invested in another place, and they're pretty well-informed already. So I wanted to begin there. I know your committee already exists, it consists of all of you, but we will have to get that committee built back.
Yeah, we just, we have begged and pleaded and scratched. And I, we just cannot get community involvement.
Fair enough.
And that's why we haven't had it.
Yeah, but did we open an application process, put an application available that was publicly placed on the website and then made a council action that said nobody responded?
I don't.
I don't remember.
That was done. I think it was just that people were.
I think we actually did put something up.
We didn't have.
I don't see any record of the, of a council action or anything like that.
We didn't have an official application. We just, we just had it notified. I've been on the Budget Committee since nineteen ninety-eight. Yeah.
A while.
Yeah, and how they got me was. I was a little bit upset about some stuff. I went to a few council meetings. And the mayor at the time saw that I was interested in what was going on and. Asked me to go on and then the whole council voted whether I was on the budget. I think we'll get better response. I I know what you're you're saying because I've seen it. We'll get better response if we follow your plan, get a little bit more organized, have an actual application. And try to get a little bit more buy-in here from the.
Well, I think we actually have an application for committees.
There isn't.
There is one for budget.
Not for budget, no. There's a specific process.
Husband and my daughter are on the Budget Committee and they filled one out.
Okay. Okay, I don't.
Generic committee forum, but.
Yeah, I don't know where it lives as far as the budget, but I was looking into our process and protocol and prior years, and so I had the opportunity to see what we've done over the last several years. But we'll just, we'll just wanna make sure that we fill this committee and we do the process, because what you have to do is you have to make a statement and formally support it through a council action. That says, we did what you told us to do. We put the application out there and nobody wants to be on it. So we're telling you that we did all this and still are ending up with that result.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
I think we should post it around town as well.
We will, because you're required to. We will have to post it at all of the public meeting locations, the public notice locations, but also get a push on social media. Right? Make sure we have that conversation with our friends and our family. Make sure we get it out to the newspaper. We're building these relationships now. So that we can ask them to do that stuff for us. In fact, the newspaper has actually thanked me every time I sent them one of the notices.
What newspaper are you using? Because.
Paper of record, which is the Gazette.
One thing that I I think would help is if we had slightly more defined requirements of these people.
Yes.
Because before it's been kind of big.
Right.
So. I know it's kind of hard to say, oh, we're only gonna have three meetings, but.
Right.
Well, I know there there's to be some confusion about, well, you have to be a resident of the city, and then there's folks outside the city that want to.
Yeah.
Interested, but you know, they're not.
Yeah, because it's tax dollars, you have to be.
Yeah, they have to be an elector of the municipal corporation, which is just saying you have to be inside city limits and are able to vote in an election.
Yeah.
Right.
But we will do this this year, and it may be that nobody else wants to be on the committee. But we can formalize that, especially since we'll be discussing reversing, potentially reversing decisions regarding our budget calendar and schedule. But we'll start with Budget Committee. I think you're all on that one, which was an easy one. What other committees? So Mayor Dan, you're on all.
Correct.
And I think I heard you say, I mean, I have all of them. I feel like I have them all in my mind, but let's go ahead. If you wouldn't mind, just list them out again.
Okay, I will. Economic Development, Finance and Personnel, Parks and Facilities, Public Works. We just talked about Budget.
Can someone help me understand the difference between Parks and Facilities and Public Works?
Don't look at me. It wasn't my suggestion to split it up.
Yeah, I haven't been on either one of those.
Just basically for the parks and the buildings. And so that has been separate from public works, and public works is more the nuts and bolts of. But they are. They're both, I mean, they're, they are very intertwined, so.
Am I missing one? Econ Dev, Finance and Personnel, Parks and Facilities, Public Works. I felt like you said one more. Right, and that was when we already.
Right.
Yeah. Right now, I think I'm the only counselor besides Dan.
I'd like to make a couple of suggestions that you all might consider, and I think tonight is really just a discussion. We're not gonna walk out tonight knowing where everybody fits. I think we'll continue this discussion during the work session with the goal of having a resolution that places everybody on those committees with clear defined term limits. At our next council meeting. There's a couple of things that we may want to do in the future that I typically recommend to local governments, and this is something for you to consider. An education and outreach committee. A committee that's responsible for thinking about the different stakeholders, business owners, homeowners. People who are adjacent to the city, our counterparts at the county and other city levels. The way we communicate with them should happen in different ways, right? You're talking to a different audience. My experience is that cities are very successful when they have a public education and outreach committee to do things like write public notices. Think about how we might wanna get articles out there, if there's something we wanna put in a newspaper or online. And that could be lots of different things. It can be videos. It could be social media ideas. We put out maybe one social media post a month. What should that look like and what do we wanna do? I wanna recommend that having a public face to the city is a really good idea. Secondly, there is a suggestion I have to consider a legislative committee. This is also something that's very, very common at the local level. There are many things, and oftentimes, Mayor Sheets, you know, you get emails from different folks at the state or local level. And they might say, what do you think? It, a lot of legislation goes really deep and has a lot of moving parts, and many of you are involved in different walks of life that could be very valuable in those discussions. My experience is that legislative committees allow us at the grassroots level to think a little bit about legislation that's either being proposed by staff. Either it's enabling legislation that's gonna let us do something. It may be financial appropriations that's going to pass money out to cities, but they have to do something or agree to something. We should have an opportunity to discuss those things because there is an opportunity to go up to the Capitol and speak in favor or against something. And sometimes more potently, you can submit a piece of written testimony and don't even have to go up to Salem, and it becomes part of the record. But it can be something that is well-baked and thought out by the city so that when we're communicating something, we're doing that in lockstep with one another. Those are two committees that I wanna suggest to you. I also wanna suggest you think a little bit about the makeup of your committees. I've had a conversation with Councilor Linder and Mayor Sheets about finance and personnel, just a lot into one. And having a personnel committee, maybe H R makes a lot of sense. Typically, a finance committee will live on its own. And that could be a committee that speaks to the council about grant opportunities that are coming up. And how they attach to different projects that us or our partners, like Long Tom Waters at Council, for example, are working on. These are just some suggestions I'm making to dial in how our committees look like. I'll stop talking. What are your thoughts?
I'm excited to talk about it in a work session. I think that it would be good to kind of shake things up and do things a little bit differently.
I think we used to have ordinance committee at one time.
We did have, and we do, it's it's ad hoc now for when we need it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I like the idea of breaking up, like you said, the finance and personnel, because I feel like it's really big. And that's probably why the public works and parks got broken off, just because they're both.
Yeah.
Pretty big. Would be my guess.
Legislative committee would be more than just our ordinances, but.
Right.
All the stuff the states and probably federal governments.
But also you need to chair all of these committees and then you need to get committee. Yeah, and and I think that's, I I think it's a great direction. And I think it's probably the the direction that we need to go in, as long as there's structure and rigor around it, right? I mean, that's been a problem for us in the past, as we we come and it's not real structured and there's no clear expectations. And so there is definitely an opportunity there. So I'd be, yeah, I'm I'm excited to talk about it and explore it in moving forward.
Staff, my job is to put that structure together for you. This is something I've done in many other places, and we can successfully make sure that all the committees speak to one another in a coordinated way. That's really what we need. We can talk about it more. Let's revisit who's on what. If it's okay, Counselor Williams, I'll start with you. What committees are you aware you're on?
I am on Finance and Personnel.
Yep. Any others at the moment?
Not at the moment, no. Okay, you're gonna make me. Yes, I'll do economic development. I will attend, I promise.
At the next meeting to formalize it, are you already on economic development?
I am. I'm just not.
Think she is.
I believe she is.
Okay.
Job is chair.
Well, you are now.
You were replacing Rich.
Well, I think actually she was before.
Was she before Nick? Well, yeah, you did come to one.
I came to one.
Yeah.
And what are you on?
Parks and Facilities and Public Works.
Parks and Facilities.
To be on economic development, but I declined due to my time constraints. So I do try to attend when I can, but I have to think, like I said, I only ever made it to.
Share both of them too.
Yeah. Both of those.
Yeah. Mayor Sheets, you were the easy one. You're already, you're the mayor, so I'm sorry. Right, and I didn't forget you, Counselor. She's reminding me, but I was going around the room.
Oh, you're fine.
I will be back. Counselor Myers.
Yeah, I I'm on Budget and Economic Development. Been on Finance and Personnel before, but.
So Economic Development outside of Budget, that's the one you're on right now. And Counselor Evans?
None of those.
Okay, because you're new.
Right, and I'm just gonna do that beautification.
That's right. Thank you for reminding me about that because I don't wanna lose that.
I think we were gonna put that kind of under Parks for now, so, yeah, like a subcommittee of Parks, so.
I think that makes some sense.
Yeah.
For sure. Let's discuss that at the work sessions, because that's where we'll have the opportunity to get into a little more detail about what these committees should be. But at present, you're not on anything because you're new. Got it. Counselor Ray.
I am obviously on the budget and apparently Chair of the budget. I'm also on Public Works.
Yes, you are.
And it looks like here recently I am on the Financial and Personnel within the last I have an invite, so.
Right, we have added you.
Yes.
And so we'll make that part of the formal action next month.
I was, I just popped into my head, we have the DAM committee too.
The eleven thirty-five damn committee, yeah, the ad hoc committee, and that was when we were discussing that with Long Tom.
Right.
That one hasn't been activated for some time. It's been a couple of years. And so my recommendation to Long Tom is that we re-seat members of that committee and stand it back up. If somebody's interested in rejoining, great, but I don't wanna just assume that all those same members are gonna be the ones we fill in with. The Planning Commission is separate. They're a quasi judicial body that must exist under state law, and so they're appointed. Okay, great. So for Economic Development, I have Williams and Myers and Mary Sheets. For Finance and Personnel, I have Williams and Ray. And Linder, thank you.
She's the Chair.
Rights. For Parks and Facilities, I think I have Cuthbertson only. Did I miss that?
Uh, not, it's on council.
Because you've had some prior folks who are now off council who have titled out that were on the committee.
Well, no, there's other citizens that are on the committee.
Okay, good, okay.
But that would fit in with Counselor Evans as far as the beautification.
Yeah, she's gonna be on.
Yep, and we can, we'll make that official, of course.
We haven't, I haven't figured out how to do that yet.
Public Works, I have Cuthbertson and Ray. Okay, and of course, Mayor Sheets, you're on there. For the Public Works Committee.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Time the Public Works Committee.
It's been a long time. We have.
Been a while.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how I started.
Can you tell me why the Public Works Committee was formed?
Why it was formed? It's since the dawn of time, it has been a committee. I don't know why.
Four mayors.
But, yeah, at least four mayors or more ago.
What are your thoughts for those of you who have attended one of those meetings? How effective have those committee meetings been?
I think I personally feel like there's other ways that we can handle those. Because I feel like it's more people getting in the middle of things that are already going on. And we don't need to be pulling our staff and our other people that are over that, like Chuck, for instance, and whatnot, away to come to another meeting. for instance, and whatnot, away to come to another meeting that they would have to do on their own hours or whatever, when they could directly report to us. And I don't know, I feel like it's a little more interfering than actually helping with public works, but that's just my personal opinion.
Originally, well, I shouldn't say originally, but I remember there was a time where we had, and he was an engineer. He was a federal employee for the Forest Service, and he was a road engineer. And so he was on public works. And that's where we got a lot of stuff done on public works. But when we lost him, we kind of lost all the expertise.
Got it.
And so without the expertise, like Counselor Cuthbertson says, we're getting in the way.
Yeah, it gets, we get in the weeds.
Yeah.
We get in the weeds.
Without that engineering expertise, especially for the infrastructure, you know, the committee doesn't have the expertise to actually do much.
That's very helpful context.
Yeah, and I feel like too, it's like we come up with just thing, extra work that they would have to do anyway. I feel like they're really very focused and very busy with what they have, the load that they have already. I feel like having other extracurricular things to try to drive what they're doing is not necessarily productive, but more counterproductive. I don't know. I mean, I'd like to hear it from their point of view as well, but having to have them try, and that's another reason why recently we haven't been doing it is, how do you get Chuck to come?
Well, that's part, part of it is right, the staff contribution.
Right.
Just for the record, I did not ask you to say everything you said, although you're echoing everything I came here to say.
Okay, good.
The point that I want to make is public works is one of the most highly regulated industries, both on the water and the wastewater side. Because of that, you must be a subject matter expertise expert. You must have that expertise. Mark's been here for four years and he's still not certified on those things and still needs guidance. So for a committee of citizens, well intentioned citizens, take their time and effort to contribute to that, there's not a lot that you can do. And also, we have so many in the weeds, very detailed moving parts that have to happen the way that they have to happen. We would have to go through so much just time to educate committee members. And with the cycling out of committee members, we're doing that in perpetuity. So my recommendation is that you consider dissolving the Public Works Committee unless there's a strong reason for keeping it in place.
So public works is, it's a priority for this council. Infrastructure is a priority.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
There is no reason in my mind to have the committee at this point. It's on our minds, we're always talking about.
We got reports every month.
And we are getting reports. I think too, at one point, we weren't getting the information that we wanted to get. And so I think that that was part of the driving force. I think now as things are coming around, I think, I think it's just evolved differently. And I, I think it could be doing more harm than good. That's one reason why I haven't been pushing to have the meetings is.
It was more of a babysitting committee.
Yes.
Based, based on the lack of trust.
Got it.
So I, I 100% agree that we can.
Do we need a motion?
No, no, hold on. What, I brought that up because what, that was the only committee I didn't have a lot of contacts on. At the next work session, I will have a slide deck that basically has one sentence or two sentences for each committee, as I understand it, presented to you with a recommendation. And you all can decide whether you want to split them, keep them, get rid of them, place the members on that committee, and then we'll formalize that two weeks later at the council meeting.
I love it. Perfect, thank you.
Councilor, you're just ready to go. You're like, what have we got to do?
Get this party done. I'm on twelve twelve, so.
Yeah.
Twelve, ooh. That's.
And some of them are thirteen hour days.
Oh, I'm so sorry, that's brutal.
They say twelve, but yeah.
Yeah.
So you're doing twelve days of twelves?
I'm on day eight, sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we're doing shutdown, so.
All hands on deck.
So I think we're ready to move on, if you are TJ.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to annual versus biannual budget. You have a presentation for us, do you?
I do, thank you. I should have just stayed on the tab that I was on last, I did not.
That's a name from the past.
I was just talking to my wife the other day that the save symbol on your computer is still a floppy disk, you know?
It actually is this.
And we were like, wait a minute, we recognize that. Okay.
Funny you say that.
Go ahead and share my screen now. So as you all are aware, and I became aware immediately upon starting here at the city, that we moved to a biannual budget last year. The context that was provided to support that decision is uncertain and unclear to me. So my goals are to better understand what your understanding was for the rationale and what staff's direction are as you understand it. I have some recommendations for you as well. And I've prepared a slide deck to get us to a point where we can have a good conversation. So to begin, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the differences between biennial and annual budgeting, what those things require us to do, what the benefits and the consequences are if we do that. So we'll explain it, we'll explain it, we'll talk about its adoption of Monroe, who outline the pros and cons. We'll clarify what a biennial budget entails and will provide a path forward for potentially returning to an annual cycle. So I'm kind of queuing in a little bit to what my recommendation may be. I want to begin by saying that I was not very familiar with many municipalities having a biennial budget. I went and did some research because I was very curious about how many cities in the state of Oregon does this because it is allowed under ORSs. What it turns out is that many large cities do a biennial budget. Many counties also do a biennial budget. And the reason is because they want to tie their budget calendar to the states because they have so much state money coming into their budget that it makes a lot of sense. And the extra hoops that you have to jump through to have a biennial budget are worth it to them because number one, they have the technical expertise on board to do it. They can hit the quarterly updates and requirements that need to happen every three months when you do a biennial budget. And also they're coordinating with the state, so there's a lot of support. What is a biennial budget? It covers a two-year fiscal period instead of just one year. It's allowed under ORS two nine four. Monroe adopted its first biennial budget in 2024. And the formal rationale or discussion was limited at the time. Is that a fair statement?
I believe so.
Please.
Yeah.
Councilor Cuthbertson.
Yeah, I think it was limited. And also, I feel like part of, and correct me if I'm wrong, part of the rationale did also stem from the fact that we do struggle to get enough people on the committee to be able to do it. And it is so much work for our office staff, which I get.
I think that was the basic rationale.
That was the basic rationale at the time. Which I think we all agreed with, but I'm just going to say personally for myself, as things have turned out moving forward, I'm not sure it was the best move, but anyway.
Yeah.
I want to also note that I have spoken with Dawn, our financial administrative specialist on this at length. She had been asked to take on steps that are far above her range of pay and requirements and education. And those things should have done by, been done by the city administrator. Moving forward, they will be done by the city administrator. And my own SOPs are being drafted so that anybody comes after me knows that that needs to happen. Dawn, I think, is a little bit relieved knowing that her tasks are a bit more compact than they were in prior years. And I think that our recruitment efforts for the budget committee may end up being beneficial. But if not, and we only have a couple of members, then we can make that statement and just move forward if we did that. But I appreciate that, that context, because that does help me understand a little bit better what the council was wanting to accomplish.
See, he's planning for 2050.
I love it, I love it.
Like you said, when he.
And I think too, as we, we just listened to recommendation at the time and tried to move forward with the information that we were given.
That's all we can ever do, right? We take the information, the best information that we have to find to make a decision.
And now we're in a position where we are.
It was all presented like a workload issue.
Correct.
It was, but I'd like to see where you go because I don't know if I'm in favor of an annual. So I would like to see your presentation and how this nets out.
So what changed in Monroe? We used to have the annual budget cycle. We have the first biennial budget was implemented. And again, like I said, we're considering reverting that potentially. What are the benefits? So it encourages long-term thinking and project plan. If you have a lot of capital projects that you'd like to see, you have a 10-year capital improvement plan. I'm not talking about emergency infrastructure improvements. I'm talking about major improvements, expansions, upgrades to park systems, roads, you name it. It may make sense, especially if you have a lot of money coming in from the state. So like, for example, the State Transportation Infrastructure Plan, STIP. That's one where a lot of counties get a lot of money. They may choose to go with a biennial budget. Again, it reduces staff time spent on budget prep annually. So to the point that was made a few minutes ago, that that is something that is true. Staff doesn't have to do as much every single year. But on your considerations, it's harder to forecast revenues. We're already experiencing that. So for example, we purchased census meters, census is the name of the company, to upgrade from the old meters to the new ones. So the city administrator at the time recommended we move to a biennial budget, but he didn't extrapolate that out for the budget. And so we only had one years instead of two years worth of census meters and we had half the money necessary. So we literally are missing the other half to buy those meters in this budget cycle. And there aren't a lot of easy ways to rectify that because of the way that the ORSs are written. We have to kind of know what we want to do in a two-year period of time. And we have to nail that down and etch it in stone. That's hard to do. And also, one of the big issues is community oversight, especially for a community like this that wants to know what's going on. Less frequent council and public engagement. If the budget is only being discussed every two years, people are used to hearing about budgets annually. If they're not seeing it annually, they might be going, what's going on here? They might want to know why they're not hearing about it.
Good point.
On the annual budget side. So the benefits is that we focus on that year-to-year changes and we're able to bake in the flexibilities that we need when something occurs, something changes. There's a big change between last year and this year. This is how 90% of cities handle their budgets. The big cities, so Corvallis, Eugene, and a couple of smaller ones. Interestingly, I found the smallest one that I could find was a city of Sandy, which has 12,000 people. Like they went to a biennial budget this year, and I don't know why. But in speaking with our auditor, our auditor deals with municipalities all over the state, they're not aware of any other city in their portfolio that does a biennial budget. And also, like I said, it provides regular checkpoints for oversight, which is, connects to that component about the public wanting to know more. They want to know that we're checking on these things annually, we're checking the box and that we're handling money well. The considerations of an annual budget, of course, kind of speaks right to what we talked about a minute ago. It's more time intensive to prepare annually. Not so burdensome that all cities don't do it, but it is more time intensive. And it is better suited for small cities with limited resources. Typically, on a biennial budget, you have to do a much bigger push. You have to know a lot more. You have to be able to predict and see a lot farther in cities at a smaller scale. Typically, don't have the staff, resources, or expertise to be able to do that. I'll continue on. I felt like there was like a question brewing, so I stopped for a moment. Legal procedural, legal and procedural requirements for biennial budgets. So like I said, it is allowed under this ORS by ordinance, which you all know because you've done that. You can also bake it into your charter. The budget committee terms are for four years and must be staggered. So when you change to a biennial budget, you also have to change your term limits for your budget committee, i.e. you and the community members. So as we're, I don't know if you revisited the discussion about budget committee when you move to the biennial budget that is known as requirements. Your estimate sheet must show two prior actuals, current estimates, and two-year projections. So there's significantly more information that you need to provide. And that can be complicated to get accurate. This one came up recently, your tax levies must be approved. We had a sort of, oh, and right when I came on board, we had to certify, we had to pass a resolution that allowed, the county actually reminded us of this because they said, hey, I know you're on a biennial, but you have to do that every year. And we didn't have any kind of calendar in place for our annual budget, let alone a far more clear and stringent one that we would have needed in place if we moved to a biennial. Expenditures or levies cannot increase after approval without republishing and new hearing. So let's say something does happen and there's a significant change and we absolutely have to increase the budget. You have to post an ad hoc hearing, you have to message it, notice it, that can be expensive. It can also be very cumbersome for staff who are trying to work on other things and weren't exactly planning for a hearing. Budget and tax levy resolutions must be adopted before June 30th, before the biennium starts. Tax levies must still be certified annually, as I said a few minutes ago. And that must be to the county by July 15th. So we have two dates on there with regard to that. We missed both of those. And again, only the first year of a biennium requires submission to Department of Revenue. But you have to do that every two years and you have to know that you don't send anything to them on that intermediate year. So operating on a biennial budget, again, 24-month appropriation cycle, no new adoption in year two, only adjustments if needed. Require strong quarterly reporting and internal monitoring. And again, there's less flexibility in changing priorities mid-cycle. Small cities, we need to be nimble, we need to move quickly and fast. And that's challenging to do on a biennial budget. Process, if you were to consider returning to an annual budget. This is permitted by ORS, by the Oregon advice statutes. We would simply pass, I say simply, we would go through the process, which I would guide to pass a resolution to do that. We would notify the Department of Revenue and the County Assessor. We would begin the internal planning in fall 2025 so that we're ready for March. And we had adopted the annual budget for 26, 27, coming up in this next fiscal year, if that is what council would like to do. That is my recommendation. I think that it's important, I think it simplifies council staff and public engagement significantly. I don't know how much messaging you did about a change to a biennial budget. I don't know how much the public is aware of that, but I suspect you probably had to do a good bit of that to make sure people were aware. You have to align with Monroe's size and governance model. I think that this is really the best bet on an annual budget. And again, it improves transparency and responsiveness. Suggested talking points for you all, if you choose to move forward and the cities want to know why the government is considering this, again, you're able to, it works for larger organizations, biennial budget. Monroe scale, your needs are better served by an annual budget because of the flexibility. This is not a rollback, but really a refinement based on experience and guidance. And frequent engagement builds trust and accountability, and that's what you get out of an annual budget. Those are my recommendations. You as a decision-making body, tell me how you would like staff to proceed. If you don't want to change, that's understandable. I'm curious if you have any questions.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm absorbing. I am a proponent of the biennial budget. I think that's a good thing for us. I have two members of my household who are on the budget committee and it made sense from an engagement standpoint, from current citizens at the time. And I think that the time that we're going to get back, or like the resources that we're going to get back from, from city staff is going to be able to be used effectively and efficiently on the quarterly reporting.
We're not doing quarterly reporting. We were supposed to begin quarterly reporting if we moved to a biennial budget. That hasn't happened.
Okay, well, I mean, I think, you know, now that we have the resources in place and the infrastructure to staff city count, city, city hall, I think it can be something that we continue to do. I just think it was a lot of resources with very limited staff. And I understand the flexibility and being nimble is great, but I think we also need to develop our CIP plan, right? We need to see what that long-term continuous improvement projects are going to be and budget accordingly for them. I'm just, I'm just not a fan, that's going to be how I see it. But I thank you for your presentation and your context.
Haven, we had a. We have to do an adjustment on the biennial months already. Or we had to do one.
Some uncomfortable adjustments coming forward, the lead, one of which is going to be the census meter change. But there's a lot. We didn't bake to get, we didn't put together a calendar. This was a half-baked.
Yeah, and so essentially, we're going to probably be putting just as much time as an annual budget.
Or more.
Well, and also, we are short-staffed at this point.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing with Counselor Williams' viewpoint. We're just saying, I don't know if we could do it.
Right. I think with any change like these that come about is you're going to feel the pinch points right away. And we are, that's what's happening. But we address them, we vote on them as a city council, and we move forward and we monitor, right? We come up with a calendar, we see what's happening, we look at our CIP plan.
So the CIP has to happen no matter what kind of budget you have?
I understand that.
All cities have that regardless of whether it's annual or biennial. The important thing to note is that if you want to make changes, if you want to be able to increase your budget or something happens in that. The important thing to note is that if you want to make changes, if you want to be able to increase your budget or something happens in that second year, there's nothing you can do about it. And you don't have the flexibility to make any significant changes really at all.
This is a side note, but um, what happens if we don't use all the money in the budget? We don't need it all.
That would be a wonderful problem.
Like to know that as well.
We're not there. Like, what happens is it gets rolled over into the filing budget and the budget committee considers that in their rollover. Um, again, it's a nice problem to have. Typically, what that means is that we over budgeted for something and under budgeted for something else. So it's really, really unlikely to see that across the board, you'll just have more than.
A few funds that were over budgeted and we transferred them on the next budget year.
That's typically.
I guess for me and my concern sticking with the biannual, you had mentioned TJ about Dawn, basically. It was a whole new ball of wax for her, basically, learning, learning all that. She didn't have the expertise, she didn't have the experience.
Yeah.
And.
Dawn's at a meeting on Wednesday to go learn about budgeting on an annual basis, which is what the majority of the world does. You need to be an experienced subject matter expert with a team of finance people under you, which is why it's the largest cities who have a biennial budget. We don't see this happening at most cities that aren't connected to the state. The real reason for doing it, the only reason for doing it. At the city level is, hey, we want to connect to the state's calendar because we have so many grant funds and. Funds being allocated by agencies that it just, it works for us. The time savings is really minimal. It's actually almost really nothing in terms of what you don't have to do that second year because we still have to follow all the same steps. It's just, we don't have to call the committee. That's really not that big of a deal, but the biggest thing is that we can miss those steps. Because we're like, oh, we're just on cruise control. We don't have to do anything this year and we've already run into that.
Right.
Can, can I chime in?
Yeah.
Um, so the one example that he's using has really caused strain in public works. So we chose to go with the new census meter system, which is phenomenal. It's great system. We're still working out some kinks, unfortunately. Uh, but we're working with the guys that know how to fix it, uh, and we fixed quite a few of those. But I was originally told that we had the biennial budget and we were going to get the first set of meters in and then wait for the second year. And they were funding for the second set of meters, which should theoretically do the whole set, the whole town. Well, we got this first set of meters in, got started with replacing them and then we're told, oh, there was no second half of that budget. You're not getting new meters for two years. So now we are reading three separate types of meters.
Yep.
In one day.
That's costly.
Folks, we did not have the subject matter experts on board to make the recommendation that was made. When you all received the information that you received, you did not have complete information. At this time, we are experiencing a significant number of knock-on effects and we haven't experienced all of them yet. There are going to be more as a result of this. And so I am having to be very vigilant to keep my eyes open on a swivel, my head on a swivel in all different directions. To make sure I see what's coming at me. We are very small for this kind of budget. Again, I wasn't here when we made that decision, but I can see from the records and information that I have available that this was not. Really clearly thought out and presented the way that you would expect the city to do so.
Well, and I know on the transition period, Dawn was communicating, we had set it up so that. Um, she could talk to the finance manager over in the city of Harrisburg and that was very, very helpful for her. But I mean, otherwise, I, I don't know where we would have gotten our expertise, to be quite honest. So it was a big concern at the time.
Yeah.
We were very thankful to have it.
Absolutely.
Well, it sounds like we're kind of in a pickle and, uh.
Yeah.
Even though I like the biennial budget myself, I understand the reasons why not. Because, let's, just to use Corvallis as an example, they have twenty thousand households compared to our, what, seven hundred households or, or less.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, yeah, seven hundred citizens. Um, and so their cost to their citizens is amortized over much greater. There's always a fixed cost. So they could probably afford to go by annual budget. And I know they have tons of planners because I don't. I don't think we should throw away the two, that biennial budget, but we should probably revert to the single year until we can get. More on our feet, so to speak.
What I'd like to recommend, this needs to be a discussion that goes a couple of sessions. What I'd like to use this time for is to find out whether or not this can, can conversation should continue beyond today.
So, well, when do we have?
My recommendation is that if we were to revert, that we would want to do that by the end of November. Um, if you would like to continue this discussion, we can schedule it for the work session and I can provide a little more context. I wanted to broach it today so that we had the opportunity to decide whether or not we even wanted to keep going down that road.
I think we should. I, I, as much as I would love the biennial for why it was originally proposed. I also kind of don't trust it. For other reasons, and I think that the baby steps of doing the annual would be better for us right now until. I mean, I don't think it's necessarily the worst idea. I just think the timing and the reasoning at the time and stuff wasn't exactly what it needed to be to. For us to move there. I don't think we had what we needed. Maybe it was a little bit early or something.
What are the terms of the, uh, citizen committee members for the annual budget?
Um, the annual budget, they typically serve, I believe it's two-year terms. I'd have to confirm that. I believe, I'll have to confirm that though.
Okay.
Um, what I, what I'd like to do though, from what I'm hearing is that there, it, this qualifies for more discussion. So I can sketch, I can, we can discuss it the next, uh, work session meeting and I can provide a little more information. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I came on the council late, but they all ran and on the ballot it said a four-year term. And the person I replaced, it said a four-year term.
Yes.
So if we go to my annual budget. Do they serve the four-year term that was on the ballot?
Yes, and so this is this budget committee. And so we, the city council members are already on those cycles that work for you. Um, I think the big piece on the two-year was that they have to be staggered, staggered terms. And that's the thing that I'm really unclear about too. We don't have community members and we didn't revisit that. So this is the first time I'm really ever talking about a biennial budget with any local government. Um, I've, I've never gone through any conversation about that with anyone. It's very atypical. So I will have to do a little homework myself. I don't know.
All right. We'll discuss it further.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, planning fees, budget transfer, general administration to city administrator.
Uh, yes, so this is, uh, wha- what we're asking council to do is approve a transfer. Um, from the planning to the general administration. We previously had planning fees set aside for our contract planner. Um, they left pretty much the same time I was coming on board. Uh, and so those fees need to go towards that portion of my salary instead of to a contractor. So I wanted to have a discussion about that. I wanted to see if that was anything any of you wanted to talk about. I did not just craft a resolution first. Because I wanted to see if that's something you'd like to, to discuss. We can bring that before you in October for the actual resolution. What are their questions or comments about that?
It makes sense.
That's, I think, what we discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how we pay for you.
Yeah, so we'll be making, we're making a budget transfer.
Yeah.
So I will craft the resolution and I'll bring that to you for next month and we can review it at the work session as well. I have some easy things in here for you.
Uh, the next item here is the credit card policy.
Yes, you reviewed that at the last work session. Last time I had the words draft across it. This time it does not. There were no changes for our discussion. Um, following, um. Following this conversation, what I'm asking is that the council take action. To approve that this be included in our new policies and procedures manual that I am creating. You will see every single policy that we craft before it gets folded into that manual. And this is on page thirty-nine, starting.
Okay, so there were no changes?
And we did have good discussion at the work session meeting. I appreciated councillor's comments. Is there anything that came up between then and now that you'd like to discuss?
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Yep.
Okay, well, we just need a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the city of Monroe credit card policy and have it included in the SOPs as well.
So.
Any other comments or questions? Are we good to vote? Okay. Counselor Evans.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Yes.
Especially like eight point one of that.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yes.
As with all policies.
Yeah, we have a little. Tree or whatever you want to call it. Yeah.
I believe that transparency is incredibly important. So while nothing in the charter requires for internal policies to come before council, it is my policy. That that always occurs so that you never are unclear about what administration is doing with that.
All right, next on the agenda is a draft code enforcement ordinance. It's on pages forty-two through forty-five.
Thank you, Mary. So this has come before you as a discussion, uh, two times now. Um, this ordinance is the first step towards getting us to a point where we can. Um, address code enforcement issues, in particular when they're a problem for, for public works, when they're going out reading meters. Or for the public, when somebody's blocking their mailbox or something of, of critical importance. Um, this would be ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four, an ordinance establishing code violation procedures. Appointing a code enforcement officer, defining duties and authorities and amending the Monroe municipal code. So therefore, um, whereas the city of Monroe is responsible for protecting the public health, safety and welfare of its residents through the fair and consistent enforcement of city ordinances. Whereas city staff in the public works department have experienced difficulty accessing meters, easements and other public utilities due to property. Uh, conditions or violations preventing timely maintenance and service delivery. Whereas the city has received complaints from community members regarding property conditions that negatively impact neighboring properties, neighborhood livability and the public good. Whereas the city currently contracts with the Benton County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement services on an hourly basis. And using deputy time for code enforcement issues reduces the resources available for law enforcement matters directly tied to public safety. Whereas establishing a local code enforcement officer will provide Monroe with a cost-effective, community-focused method of addressing code violations. While preserving sheriff resources for public safety priorities. And whereas voluntary compliance, education and cooperation will be emphasized to ensure that enforcement promotes fairness, consistency and community trust. This would establish a policy, um, for a procedure to create and handle violations of city ordinances that are not of a criminal nature. The purpose is to provide a fair, convenient and practical process for gaining compliance with city codes. In order to protect the health, safety and welfare of the community. Violations must, uh, pirate violations processed under this chapter are civil violations. And do not require proof of intent or culpable mental state. Enforcement shall prioritize voluntary compliance and education before penalties or court action. This is directly from the discussion we had with council. Um, definitions, code enforcement officer, the public works lead. Or another person designated by the city administrator and affirmed by council, responsible for enforcing this chapter. Responsible party is the person responsible for committing or remedying a violation, including A, the property owner, owner's agent. Or a person in control of the property, B, the occupant or tenant of the property, or C, the person alleged to have committed or authorized the violation. Violation is defined as any act or omission that contravenes a section of the Monroe municipal code. Designated in, as in a force under this chapter, violations are civil. Prior contact is communication between the city and the responsible party before issuing a citation. So that communication, that good neighbor component, um, may include phone calls, letters, emails or prior citations. And must identify the violation, the responsible party, require corrective action and a deadline for compliance. Voluntary compliance agreement is a written agreement between the city and the responsible party that sets terms and deadlines for remedying a violation. Um, the public works lead in terms of appointment would be designated as the code enforcement officer. Council would be able to designate another person or position or, or by ordinance or resolution. The city administrator supervises the enforcement program. The enforcement process would be that investigation, reviews of facts would occur when a potential violation is reported or observed. The code and code enforcement officer would review the facts to determine whether sufficient evidence exists. Prior contact and voluntary compliance, a reasonable effort shall be made to contact the responsible party and offer a voluntary compliance agreement. Um, if complied with, the matter is closed. Failure to comply constitutes a separate violation. Citations and complaints, if voluntary compliance does not achieve, the officer may issue a citation to be filed in a municipal court. The citation must include name of responsible party, violation, date, time, place, maximum fine and court appearance. Um, each day continuing a violation exists may constitute a separate violation. Service may be pursued by personnel, personal service, first class and certified mail or other lawful method. Defects in service are not a defense and the responsible party had actual knowledge of the violation. And remedies and penalties would include fines unless otherwise specified. Fine should not exceed five hundred dollars per day per violation. That number is a number that I place in here, but one the council should absolutely discuss, um, but does reflect what other communities have. Leans, the city may recover unpaid judgments, fines or abatement costs as liens against the real property. We already have this as part of our code for other things. Abatement, um, we can actually take care of the issue ourselves and bill those costs directly to the responsible party. And remedy not exclusive, the city may use cumulative remedies, including voluntary agreements, citations, abatement, liens or civil actions. So we can throw lots of different things at a problem depending on how severe it really is. Um, the party could appeal a written citation, um, to the city administrator. So what I'm doing is I'm offering them an administrative approach before it goes, um, to the court. They would have the right to go to the court after that if they wanted to appeal that decision. Um, they must be filed in writing within a specific, specified number of days. Reporting, the code enforcement officer shall maintain records of violations, agreements, citations and outcomes. And report quarterly to the council. So that's something that Mark and I will work on. And if this were approved, Mark would be responsible for giving you a report quarterly on any violation. Severability, again, this goes into all documents. If any portion of this ordinance is invalid, the remainder shall remain in effect. Um, and the rest of it is boilerplate signage language. Any discussion on this? I wanted to bring this before you today. Have a reading of it so you can hear it. And then I wanted to have a discussion at our work session so that you had some opportunity to digest this. Is there anything now that you wanted to talk about?
Specified number of days. Are we supposed to pick how many days?
Yeah.
And would it be straight across the board for any violation?
Yes, that is council discretion, but my recommendation is that appeals period should be the same for everybody. So there's the moving parts here for you all to think about is, do we want to appoint Mark to be a reactionary code enforcement officer? He's not going out there looking for problems, but he is able to respond to issues that are called into city hall or that are directly obstructing him from completing his job. Number two is the amount that a maximum amount of fine could be. Right now it's set at five hundred. Um, and additionally, the number of days for appeals, some of those things in here that I wanted to highlight for you. I wanted to read it out loud as well to see if there was any comments or discussion.
Um, you have the maximum fine of five hundred. Um, is there like a percentage for non-payment before we put a lien on it?
Yeah, so technically what I'm saying up there is that every day is another violation.
Okay, oh, I see that.
Yeah, so it can, it can add up. Sorry, no more than five hundred. It's not saying that all of them are going to be five hundred. We would have a schedule of fees. That are really based on the severity of the issue.
Yeah.
And then that's something that would come before you as well as we get further into the weeds of this policy. Right now, we're staying really at the high level and talking just about the, the verbiage and the intent of that piece of legislation if you choose to.
But when it comes down to actual city council being, making decisions on it, then we can adjust that.
Well, you, you set the fees and then they're set. And every, we have to treat everybody fairly. If somebody has a car parked, we can't charge him fifty and somebody else over here, we charge them a hundred.
Yes, I.
Because the conversation becomes, well, why'd you do that?
Understood.
Fourteenth amendment, equal treatment.
Yes.
Cause then there's a separate fee.
But that's up to the fire department, not the city. Right.
I don't know, we might have an order on hydrants.
If it's. Right, and so typically our ordinances are in place for fire safety and welfare, life safety, all of that. So our ordinances reflect what the fire marshal needs. If somebody's in front of a fire hydrant, that is a code violation. I don't think that's something Mark is looking for particularly, um, but yeah, it is one.
Yeah, I, I think the fire marshal has, here's what we recommend and we have to make ordinance.
Oh, is that what this? Okay, then we need to check with him.
But that, that would be one of those. But that that would be one of those. What we're doing is firming up something we already have. We have a lot of nuisance language, but we don't have anything baked in here.
Because I don't think the fire department has a similar position that they can write.
Nope. What they'll do is they'll just bust a hole through both windows.
Yeah, they will.
I've seen that happen. And then they'll go right through your car.
Yep.
Well, I've seen him just push it out of the way, too.
Yeah.
Just push the bumper on it. That's why they put pusher bumpers on his car.
So it makes sense to have Mark be the code enforcement officer. You're out there when you're meter reads or whatever else you're you're doing when you're out.
Around the whole town.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's that's the other question.
Concern would just be your time.
Time I can go through and just have a civil conversation with these people and say, hey, this is a problem. If it doesn't get rectified, then it's going to go further. And usually, people are receptive to that and resolve the issue. There's a few onesies twosies that I've talked to numerous times, and I've gotten the, yeah, we'll get it taken care of. And then and they don't. They work on it for a month or two, and then it just stops and then progresses back to what it was or worse.
Know where you're talking about.
So if there aren't any directives or questions from council, we can bring this back for a work session. I want to recommend that you take an opportunity to just read through this, highlight the things that you'd like to discuss at that work session. I'd like to move that conversation forward at the work session. So for October, we may have some additional business to work on for this.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Should we not have someone else as well for as a backup at least?
For code enforcement?
Yes.
That's as directed by the city administrator.
We, right. I mean, Don? What are you thinking?
Yourself?
Myself, I mean, I could be.
Whoever would fill in for Mark when he's not here?
I would be able to do that if there's an
We're only marking, didn't you know?
Some people might have a problem with that. I wouldn't.
Well, we, if Mark wasn't here for a long period of time, we'd have to get somebody on a temporary basis like we're doing for Chuck. We
I mean, like, just two weeks out of the year.
Right. If somebody calls, if somebody calls City Hall, we have a code enforcement issue, obviously, I would be able to address that. Um, I can, according to this, appoint myself. And that's something that if the council thinks I should do, I probably should do, just in case Mark's not here. But I think the important thing is for the ninety percent of the time is that we give our our public works guys the the tools that they need for those onesie twosies that he's talking about that just don't want to comply. That's really
Yeah, besides a reactionary, that's not going to hurt if he's gone for a couple.
If he's gone for a couple of weeks, whoever's replacing him on that route, probably going to be me and somebody else. I don't know. We'll deal with it.
Yeah, I mean, even if we don't.
Or something, you know?
Right. But that, you know, if it's a fire issue and the fire department comes to us and say, hey, we got somebody parked there, we can't move them, we could call the sheriff.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But if they mean, if the fire department needs to get you a hydrant, they're going to get you a hydrant. It's not, they're not going to wait for us to enforce an ordinance.
And I know your concern is Red Hills specifically, and
No, I'm not concerned just there.
Right. It happens throughout town, but Red Hills is really bad because the contractors didn't put paint on any of the curbs or anything over there, and that is a plan to get done. I know. But there is a plan to get paint and stuff over there. So hopefully, that will deter people. There's, we have hydrants in not so great locations, and I've seen people parked in front of numerous. It happens throughout town, but Red Hills is a big concern of mine because specifically, there's no paint. And I've discussed it numerous times with the fire chief, and we're going to get over there, and we're going to plan out what needs to be painted and what colors they need to be and all that stuff.
And one thing to mention is that actually, on the sheriff's report, there was a good chunk of time that for just one issue, we had to have somebody come out and deal with a car that was in front of the mailbox. It's actually, I talked to you all about that when I brought this up. That's time that we can give back to the sheriff's office and deal with life, safety, and welfare issues.
Right.
Rather than a car park.
Right.
Agreed.
Okay, so folks, I encourage you to take a look at this, highlight the things that you care deeply about, and we can discuss this further at the work session meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I'm ready to pass it now.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we've got on the agenda, contract with Carson for propane pre-purchase.
Yes. I'll preface this by saying, one of the changes to code that I'd like to bring forward to you is your authority to allow me to make small contract changes. Right now, every single contract, regardless of size, must come before city council as the way that it's written inside of our code. So here you are with a change from our current vendor to Carson. Carson offers a significant discount, as I discussed with you last time. They charge us a base rate plus fifty cents. This is, in my view, an excellent deal, is significantly lower than what we're paying at just the base rate that they're offering from our other company. And I'm so sorry, I'm drawing the blank on it right now. They're charging us two ninety-nine. There is, there is the possibility that something huge in geopolitics could go awry, maybe Russia and Ukraine get really worse, and gas goes way up. We're buying this once a year, so we're nailed down for right now. But there's the possibility that next year, that floating rate plus fifty could go higher than what we have nailed down with that other company, making you aware of that very small but possible risk.
So do they provide the price index if you ever ask them?
Yes, they do. They actually, they actually nail it to the to the to the National Price Index. So you can literally go and look it up. I did do that, by the way.
Yeah.
And how long is this contract for?
In perpetuity.
Okay.
Until we, and they have a little monitor on there. They let us know every year when we're ready to refill. It includes both our tank at City Hall for heat, as well as Ron's tank over for the park host.
Okay.
No, no, we don't have one over here.
So are you asking for us to agree with to this contract?
Yeah, I am. And this is literally what the code requires me to do. I have to bring every contract before you. So
Are you also asking us to make a change to that, or do we have to do that in another meeting?
No. If you simply pass a motion today that says you're authorizing me to move forward this contract, I'm going to go forward and do the thing that I know needs to get done. I'm blanking on the other one, too, now. I know, right?
As soon as you said it, I was like, yeah, suburban. No, it's I thought it was in here somewhere.
I figured it wasn't important enough to rack my
Yeah.
I mean, besides Carson?
Yeah.
The other C.
The other C.
I had it committed to memory earlier in the week, and then I had it
I bought thousands and thousands of gallons of diesel that way.
This is, oh, this is diesel.
This is
Coenergy.
I'll make a
Somewhere.
Yeah, it was.
I make a motion that we authorize the city administrator to complete this contract for one thousand one hundred, one hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents to Carson for propane.
I'll second.
All right. Also utilize them for the generator at the workstation. That's who we use to fill the generator when it's getting low.
Carson.
Yeah.
Wait, we didn't have Coenergy also doing that?
It's not
It's the first time I'm hearing about this. Let's talk tomorrow.
Already that.
Okay, these numbers could change, but I'm asking you to approve a contract with Carson entirely.
So the the filling of the generator is usually maybe it it's once a year.
Yeah, it should be the same.
Yeah.
So we have two companies filling different tanks.
Do you want me to
Is that propane or is that a fuel?
No.
It just
So it's different.
Contract based on that rate?
Yeah, if you approve me to move forward with Carson, as our, as our, really, we're changing providers. The dollar amount is less important than the provider.
Okay, yeah, but his is, he's talking about diesel, so
Oh, that's diesel. Right. Yeah, they don't use propane over there. That makes sense. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We've got a motion. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Shall we vote?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Okay. We got contract policy. That's next on the agenda. Discussion on administrative approvals. Or was that part of essentially the previous?
So that was actually what I I I baked it together. I put it together, but the contract policy is I need to come back to you. Do you support me writing a policy that changes our current code?
Yeah, there should be a higher
Threshold.
Yeah.
Which we normally say.
Yeah, because we used to put a threshold of five hundred for certain things. But I think with the, you know, cost index right now, I'd say two thousand would
I'd like to come forward with a recommendation on what a lot of other city councils do. We have to find that balance between oversight and day-to-day business operating seamlessly.
Yeah.
So I can, at the work session, I can bring forward some suggestions on what other cities do and give you something to think about if that's helpful.
That'll work.
Yep, that will please do.
I'd like to do a five.
Okay. All right. Now we can talk about the IGA agreement with the COG, we're already in technical services.
Correct.
Is this just the renewal or?
No. So I want to be clear. So the COG, they charge us roughly about a hundred dollars a month. That is their fee. But what we get out of that is more than you might realize. So first off, they do a monthly luncheon where they pay for the lunch for all the city administrators. And what we do is they provide a lot of economic development information. They provide a lot of policy data. They provide GIS information, everything that's going on at the county and the regional level. It's very helpful for city managers and city administrators to get together and have those discussions. They also support us with a number of other things. For example, our land use efforts. They support us if we're part of their efforts, if we're part of them and we're paying those fees. They actually help us with things like budgeting. We passed a resolution back in twenty twenty-one that you that said we were interested in going to continue using those services. My understanding is we hadn't done that in a couple of years. There's a lot of things that they offer that we simply either forgot that they do or stopped using.
It looks almost like we're we're just hiring them as an IT department, right?
So in addition to your hundred dollar a month fee, because this question was, don't we already pay them? Is this a renewal? No.
Yeah.
This is on top.
That was a membership fee.
Yes, you have to be a member in order to use these services. But I wanted to be clear with you that the membership fees and what we're getting for those is really worth it, in my view, which is why we have full participation from all of the cities with the COG. There isn't anybody backing out of that. Once we're a member, we're able to do things like this. So what I'm recommending is we use the COG for their IT services. They're offering forty dollars a month per computer to maintain security, software, and everything that we need on all of our machines. That is, quite frankly, dirty.
And they, do they do the all the security updates then?
They do all of it.
All the patching and whatever.
Yes, they'll do everything.
That's a steal, guys.
It is a steal, which is part of why they are able to offer those rates, because we already have the membership fees that are going in for all the other things that they're doing for us. They would have remote software. They would be our IT people. They'd install software. They'd make sure our firewalls are right. They'd make sure our file servers and permission controls are accurate. It'd help us get through all of the Office three sixty-five stuff that we have to deal with right now. A lot more than I'm able to do on my own. I used to work in IT, but I'm also trying to administer a city right now, so I can't do the IT part myself.
Are they going to give us a VPN or?
You know, that can be on my wish list. We have to purchase one, of course, but I I personally would like a VPN.
Yeah.
And so that's a conversation that I, we can't even have that conversation until we have an IT.
Right. And that could be an SOW that's considered extra anyway.
Exactly right.
Are they familiar with things like SCADA systems? Are they able to do? Because we need some stuff in the water plant.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like, I don't have any internet.
So out.
So they know that we'd want six computers. Essentially, that would include the one at the water treatment plant and the five others that we'd have for staff.
Eventually, I'd like to have one at the wastewater facility, too. Not an important thing right now, but it would be nice.
We can make an adjustment.
Yeah, and that's more about making sure the firewall is right. There's not a lot of babysitting computers like there is for staff, because those computers kind of just run on their regular schedules. I doubt that's as big of an issue. Yeah, I'm sure we can do that. Yes, it is.
But there has been attacks. There my systems even, they're attacking my DVR, my dish account.
Oh, yeah, all of those IPs are completely unsecured.
Well, I have mine all secured, but I get the report saying we rejected this attack. Happens every day.
Really? Wow. So they are catching it.
Mine is.
Good.
I just want to make sure, because I brought it up before, that in what we pay COG normally anyway, that we because in past, we've gone to them because we've needed help for certain things, and they did not have those services available. And it's been that way for the last couple of years. So I am totally on board if a hundred and forty dollars a month is worth doing this for all the computers, too. Would it be two forty? Two forty would be worth it for all the computers anyway. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're
We get the services we're paying.
Because it's been really frustrating to go to them, because we have used them in the past, and they've been a great resource, and everything was great. And then we just have gone through this period of they just didn't have anything that we needed help with. They just weren't in the position to offer that. And then they came and gave their presentation and said, we're doing so many great things for your city, which really, yes, for some citizens in our city, they've provided some I want to say adult and family services, but I'm not sure that's the right one, but you know, which is great. But that gets provided whether the city pays into COG or not. So that doesn't really count. So that, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear with that, that, you know, I I heard the presentation, I heard him saying, yeah, this is what we're doing. That's great. But I want to make sure that what we're paying for as a city, we're actually getting something. So if this alone is enough to cover that, I'm on board.
It looks like it covers insurance for cybersecurity, break, you know, potential damages.
Oh, okay.
It's got security in here.
So that being said, but she's, so what she said, it looks like coverage period is almost like a biannual thing.
It does appear to be the case, yes.
Two year.
And then let me go back and make sure. So the two forty is for the IT?
Right. So we're paying forty dollars a month for
Right. But what do we pay to be part of COG?
We, so we pay, it goes up each year. It escalates slightly. It's, I think last year was like fourteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
So it's like
I'm just saying, we need to add that on top of what we're paying for IT services and make sure that that's worth, that's kind
Well, what I don't want to do is have the thought be, let's combine all those dollars together to compare them to what we're getting out of just IT. Because that's kind of where we're going, because what I'm hearing is that, well, they don't really do anything of value. So we have to lump those numbers together to see if it's worth not going out to an IT person.
Just want to make sure that they have
Yeah.
You know, that we're getting our value.
So here's what I'll say, and I'll share just, I started out in my career at lane council of governments. Councils of governments can be very effective if they do their jobs well. What I have learned from a number of other cities is they've significantly improved under Ryan Vog's leadership. I think that's a big deal. My experience in communicating with them, they've been very responsive and supportive. They do support local municipalities in a number of different ways, including in land use and just helping you get familiar with the area. So just for me, they've been very supportive. When I go to those luncheons, they have good structured meeting discussions. There's good information that comes out of that. I'm drawing, I'm developing relationships with other cities that I find to be helpful. They're providing legislative updates and information that I find important and useful. So I will say that I think the fees are worth it. If that ever changes, I'm I'm pretty fiscally responsible. And I think it's, for me, I would flag that immediately if I felt we weren't getting what we deserve.
Well, knowing that you're going to it, I feel better.
Yeah.
Because before I was the only person making any attempt to do it, and I was not finding value.
Yeah.
So knowing that you're going and you're getting value out of it, I have no question.
They told me, they said, you know, Monroe never showed up to these things. Our city, all the city
No idea.
And it's not council. The administrators and managers get together, and they told me like, okay, well, it's nice to see you here, because we haven't seen Monroe here before.
Yeah, and I didn't know that that was even available
Yeah.
For, yeah.
They do a lot. And my my opinion is that we want to leverage regional resources as much as we can, because it's it's a good resource.
Thank you, because that makes me feel a hundred and ten percent better.
Yeah, if we're not using it, what are we spending it on?
Right, and that was my concern. So knowing that you're getting value out of it, I feel much better about that.
So they were just recently here. Isn't Ryan, he's not the director of COG anymore, right? He's, he's still the director?
Executive director, yeah. Another organization, too, that's working together.
Yeah, the community services.
There you go. Yes, the CSE.
That's what he was moving
Doing both.
Doing both.
They're actually linked now. And this IT director, he is the IT director of both organizations as well.
Okay.
Yeah, they they told me a little bit about that when I was meeting with them a couple of weeks ago to get to this point. Um, this IGA, of course, would imply that you are signing on with a new year with the COG. And so I want to make that clear, right? Because we can't get these IT services without that.
Because we had held off on that just because I had all those questions.
Yes. Now, this can feel pushy, and you're more than welcome to say, move this to another meeting. I'm asking you to approve this because we need to get our IT under control. Right now, it's a big black box. Everything from firewall, security, individual computers, it is a huge liability that I don't have the time to address. So in my perspective, this needs to happen very, very quickly. You could also direct me to go identify a number of IT providers in the private sector. That would take a little more time. I'm happy to do
Probably be more expensive.
It could be more expensive, and I wouldn't be able to move as quickly. But if you, I'm just letting you know what the moving parts are and how you could choose to move forward. It could be more expensive and I wouldn't be able to move as quickly, but if you, I'm just letting you know what the moving parts are and how you could choose to move forward tonight.
It, it says coverage period from October one, of course, you know, because we'll pass September one.
I did tell them that I'd be bringing this to you tonight, but I did tell them that it's also not guaranteed that you'll approve it.
But it says a two-year contract term, but we're not getting a full two-year contract term. What are you, we're getting one year. Contract coverage period would be October one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. That's shy, August and September.
Oh.
July, August.
For the full annual fee?
Yeah, it's, we're gonna be shut, well.
Yeah, I think, I think what, what they're doing is they're charging us on a monthly basis. You can see on my.
Yeah, it's gonna be monthly basis, but the coverage period says here, it's only.
What page is that?
Forty-nine.
Page forty-nine, but then it says two-year contract farther back. And I understand they want, intend to be a two-year contract, but they probably do it on a.
They're looking to end at their fiscal year.
Their fiscal.
That's exactly.
On the state thing as a.
Yeah, so they're not gonna be charging us for two years, starting in October. This absolutely would be prorated. That's why they're saying on a.
Right, okay, yeah, that's what I was saying. All right, I just want to make sure we've talked about it.
Thank you.
I, I'll make a motion that we accept this in an intergovernmental agreement between Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. And City Monroe for technology services, coverage from October one, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay, you ready to go? Okay, Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Do, yes.
Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, it's been a long week.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we've got a resolution on surplus personal property and that is also the packet, page fifty-four to fifty-seven.
Quick correction, just for the record, it's actually an ordinance. My apologies, it was written as a resolution.
Okay.
This one is straightforward. You've already looked at the draft version of this at the last work session. If you would like me to read through the whereas clauses again, I can and I would if you ask me to. This is exactly what we discussed just two weeks ago. There were no significant changes to this. For the benefit of the public, we are developing a surplus personal property to go with our surplus real property. Code that allows us to discharge things that are no longer of need to the city in the proper way that is required by law. Are there any questions from counselors on this policy, on this ordinance?
No, we just need a motion on that tonight then, right? So it's not a draft, okay.
That is correct.
I just wanted to be clear what we are doing.
I think we can skip the reading.
I think so too.
I've read it twice.
No changes.
No change.
Oh, our motion on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three, I will entertain that.
Come on, I can't be the first one all the time. Sure you can. Okay, you guys aren't gonna do it. I'll make a motion, the City of Monroe ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh three. An ordinance concerning property disposal procedures, amending the Monroe code, adding a caption in sections thirty-six dot zero one zero. Through thirty-six dot zero eight zero to that code and declaring an emergency.
All right, any other comments or questions before we vote on this ordinance?
No.
No. Okay, then we'll vote. Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Williams? Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Sheets, you have a hard copy with you. If you wouldn't mind signing that and your hard copy. What we are doing, I just want to draw everybody's attention to the screen. To be able to record the yays and the ye, the a's and the nays, we're simply just having everybody write their name and record whether it's A or N. This is standard procedure for ordinances at all cities. I'm just baking this into our city procedure as well. Because we have no way to know who voted on what ordinances in the past. There, there is no record of that.
So I'll pass this.
Um. Yeah, it's fine, sign it. And I'll note, Counselor Leonard has absent this child, kind of check it there. Good, so we've already passed that. So once you all are done, that was the last thing I had for the council tonight. Thank you for the additional time. Mayor Sheets, I hand it back to you.
Okay, well, my agenda is being passed around now.
Oh, yes, sir. Let me go ahead and get this up to you here. I think we're at the last part.
I'm kidding, everybody's in check. Thank you, guys. Um, let's see, economic development.
Haven't had a meeting for a while.
Yeah.
That's my report.
So I believe the next one will be. October sixteenth. My wife's birthday, that should be interesting.
Plan something that night.
Uh, finance and personnel, we've got down September twenty-fourth, thank you.
That agenda is posted publicly in all the notice locations.
Perfect. Excellent ordinance, well, I don't know what we're doing with that committee, so I'm gonna skip over it right now. Parks.
Uh, I, I think, should we just hold off till we decide what to do for?
Well, I know that you would like to look at the Parks Master Plan and I very much support that effort. I think that Counselor Williams, if I'm not mistaken, you were. I think that's great, doesn't, you can work directly a planning commission on that. If you guys wanted to set a regular date, you could do that.
I want to, I want to have a regular date for, well, I don't know if we're gonna keep the other ones, so at least for.
We can talk about recording stuff tonight and dates another day.
And then public works.
Yeah, we'll discuss that.
Whether it's going to survive.
Yep.
As a committee or not. Okay, other than that, I mean, normally at the end, I ask for any counsel, counselor comments. Counselors you'd like to bring up before we adjourn for the evening. I did, yes.
If you guys could let me know when each of the committees meet, I'd like to go to at least each one, at least once or twice. So I can get footing.
October sixteenth is the Economic Development Committee.
Yes, absolutely.
And then on our website, do we have a calendar yet?
The website is dead and so we have a website, but it is not active and I've communicated that to the state as well, so they know that we're not posting on there.
Okay.
Website will be up within a couple of.
Cause I've been struggling to find if we're having. I forget, I have to look a lot, anyway.
I will, I will continue to email all of you when we have those meetings.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll bring up the Halloween spectacular event. That'll be on October thirty-first, which is a Friday night.
That's coming up.
So anybody that would like to. Yep, it'll be at City Hall. We'll be under a tent in case it rains.
Well, well, I'm sorry, was that again?
So Halloween spectacular, the event will be.
What time's it open?
Uh, it'll open at four and stays up till seven thirty.
So what kind of costumes can we show?
Oh, I think, you know, anything that you.
I don't have anything appropriate.
Appropriate for children.
Yeah, there you go, because we just hand out candy to kids and the kids just love it. Oh my gosh.
They do.
Yeah, we'll swing back. So I thought I mentioned that. Anything else?
One, I'm so sorry, I missed two things on this agenda, which I will correct next month. The Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please.
And counselor comments?
Yes.
My apologies.
We're good. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a lovely evening. Get started.